Okay. Okay, it's 6:01. I'm gonna call the meeting to order for the regular meeting with closed session for Thursday, December 20th, 2018. Let's have a roll call.
Mr. Gentry. Mr. Garin. Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Quagliano. Mrs. Melendi. Mrs. Walker. Mrs. Mr. Fleck.
I am here. We do have a quorum, barely, and we're gonna have some other people getting here a little later. Before we go into closed session, I know we have a presentation. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Baylor.
Good evening. I am here with 15 students that are part of our commended students who are recognized through the National Merit Scholarship Program, who have received a letter of commendation. About 34,000 students are commended nationwide. 16,000 of those go to the semifinalist round. However, we have 15 students who are on the commendation list, and this is out of a total of 1.6 million students. So, to have 15 here at Huntley High School, we are very proud of our students. This is all decided upon the PSAT and the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, the NMSQT. So, this is an awesome opportunity. I am going to individually call them up. We have their families here as well to celebrate this with them, and I believe we have a little token from the district to give to them. So, when I call you up, if you can just come on up here, we can just line up right here. And on behalf of the high school administration and the staff, this is an awesome honor for you. I just wanna thank you for your dedication to your education. Parents, thank you so much for your support of your students. Just taking the time in high school to deal with all of the ups and downs of not only raising a teenager, but also enduring in their successes and in their struggles. This is an awesome opportunity. You should be proud of them. This is a limited honor for a lot of our high schoolers across the nation, but the past 15 within our school community is such a blessing to us. And as a leader of Huntley High School, I say congratulations to each parent and congratulations to each student. So, Harrison Patel. I might cheat sheet on names. Nolan Preclasa. Haley Robin. Lauren Wilcox. Ruth Fubot. Natalie Bazan. Serena Bowman. Samia Desai. Lisa Dillon. Edward Mason. Noah Michael. Clarith Mason. Kevin Mahone. And Brody Lauer.
Okay, yeah, please come on up and...
You're all national commended scholars. I leave it to you to get into two rows. I gotcha. I gotcha. Just barely. Okay, so I'm gonna take the official portrait.
Okay. Next item on the agenda. Oh, did we miss somebody? Oh, okay, yeah. Okay. We're gonna go into closed session now. I'll make a motion to go into closed session for the items listed in the agenda. Is there a second? Second from Ms. Melendi. Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Garin. Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano.
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker. Mr. Fleck.
Yes. Motion carries. It's 6:11. We are in closed session.
The wind is blowing strongly. The leaves are rustling and shaking. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong. The leaves are rustling. The air is very dry and damp. The birds are singing. The wind is strong.
My reading glasses, so I'm just gonna-
One and then you're-
We need to wait for a couple people to get here and then we'll get, move resume.
Okay, it's 7:03, we are back in open session, there's no action to be taken out of closed session, let's have roll call.
Here.
Mrs. Melendi?
Here.
Mr. Guerin?
Mr. Fleck?
Here.
Mr. Quagliano?
Here.
Mr. Gentry?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Okay, with that, I think Dr. Zayas here for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi, again today, we have kindergartners and second graders, so we have a few kindergartners and then they have with them their cheetah leader, so their little, their mentor that comes to their kindergarten classroom to help them, so they'll introduce themselves and they'll say what grade? Peyton, first grade.
Moon, second grade.
Who's yours? Who's yours?
I am Logan and I'm five.
Who's the second grade leader?
Maren. Maren?
My name is Eric.
Claire, I'm in second grade.
Alexander, six years old.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where riches stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I roar.
I don't think we are supposed to do that.
You can say it, they want to hear it.
I-
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where riches stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I roar.
I don't think we are supposed to do that.
I-
You can say it, they want to hear it.
I-
I roar at chess-
I don't think we are supposed to do that.
I-
You can say it, they want to hear it. I-
I roar at chess.
I am bold, I respect others and act responsibly.
Okay, you guys get to take over the meeting now, so come on up.
And what is this for?
So when you talk, just talk into the microphone, microphone on.
What do we have to say?
Well, I'm gonna ask you some questions.
What is this? Actually later. Can I take my, am I done? Daddy, take a picture of me. I want to be your home.
I want to be up to the one where he swings down the tension.
I want my cookie. I'm very frightened. Wait, wait, what is before you? Why are they farting? What is those for? What are those for? What are those for? What are those for?
These are our presents, so.
There's candy in there. What is, what is this for?
I don't know, ba, ba. Hello?
What's this for? Look, it's pretty cute. I found a drawer. I don't like, they're gonna ask you something, I don't like to look up.
Okay, guys. First of all, thanks for leading us in the pledge and, and that also the roar part, I liked that, that was very, very good. Okay, let's see, I have, just to be sure, there's a holiday coming up in just a few days, right?
Yeah.
Which one?
Christmas.
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 Are you guys ready for Christmas?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, good. What, I'm just gonna go down the line, what is your favorite holiday TV special?
I don't know.
Good, okay.
I don't know what you guys are even talking about.
I don't know either.
Okay.
Me too.
How, how about this, do you like Rudolph?
No.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just love Rudolph with the red nose.
Me too.
Frosty?
Who loves Frosty the most?
I like him because I like snowmen.
Okay.
Me too.
All right.
Grinch Day.
Grinch Day.
Oh, that's a great show, isn't it, Grinch Day? What, what do you guys do at Grinch Day?
Grinch, wear green or have crazy hair.
Green or crazy hair.
Or we could dress up as the Grinch.
And Grinch do a present.
Okay.
Yeah.
You mean like the presents we have up there right now you're taking, so, okay, so, all right, yes, all right.
What?
We're going to, we're gonna go up and we're gonna take some pictures with you guys, okay? And then we'll return you to your parents, but thank you once again for, for helping us out with the Pledge of Allegiance today, all right? Thanks.
No problem.
Grab your cookies, grab the cookie and grab your milk and we're gonna do a picture, okay? You wanna do the picture?
I don't want-
Oh, you're gonna stand here, okay, stand up here.
All right, guys, you wanna stand up?
I want to stand this chair forever.
We'll hold you, we'll make sure you don't slide. Stand up on your, or sit up on your seat. How about on your knees?
Sit down, buddy.
What, do your knees?
I did say stand up.
That was a K2 mistake, I know.
What is everyone laughing for?
All right, take some pictures, okay? So look at the camera. There we go.
What's that thing for? Oh my gosh. Mine. Wow, that was really quick. Yeah. I just want to go home and watch TV forever. Ow, that is funny. Don't even have homework. This is the funniest and craziest day of my life. Can I just go home, please? What are those for?
I want a Grinch.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Enjoy your Grinch Day.
Would you like a cookie?
No, thank you.
No?
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Mike, would you like a cookie? John, would you like a cookie?
I'm good, I'm good.
You guys still have some cookies?
Thank you.
They never left. Sean, would you like a cookie?
We have extra snacks.
It's good protein. It's good protein. I like chocolate milk.
Thank you for your kids. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas to you all. All right, okay. Back to the status quo. I am going to skip down and get to public comment and we will do that first. There's no objections and I think we have one public comment, Mr. Troy Stinson.
Good evening, that's Stinson, S-T-I-N-S-O-N from ESGR. Good evening, everybody, my name is Troy Stinson and I represent the employer support of the Garden Reserve, also known as ESGR. ESGR is a Department of Defense office where volunteers like me nationwide work together with civilian employers to help support the men and women of the National Guard Reserve. We have three main missions, that's to educate, to mediate, and to recognize. In educate, we, we talk to service members and their civilian employers about the Uniform Services Employment and Reemployment Rights Act, also known as U.S.A.R.A. The statutory authority that comes from U.S.A.R.A. comes from the Department of Labor. We mediate, we have trained ombudsmen that provide information and mediation free of cost concerning U.S.A.R.A. law. Many conflicts arise normally because there's a misunderstanding in the U.S.A.R.A. law, rather than a purposeful violation. So, ESGR and our ombudsmen can assist in resolving these issues and it's free of cost for the employer and the employee. And we recognize, like we're here tonight, we present awards for employers that go above and beyond when it comes to the support of our men and women in the United States military in the Reserve and the Guard units. I'm here today in my role with ESGR to recognize Dr. Scott Rowe and Dr. Erica Schlichter of the Huntley Community School District 158 with the ESGR Patriotic Employer Award. Dr. Rowe and Dr. Schlichter were nominated by United States Army Reserve Master Sergeant-
Go ahead, Master Sergeant, if you'd like to take a stand, please.
United States Army Reserve Master Sergeant William Johnson for their steadfast commitment to the men and women who serve in the US Military Reserve Components. Just to talk a little bit about the Patriotic Employer Award, it's designed to recognize supervisors and bosses for support that helps the National Guard and Reserve members better serve our nation. Employer support can include such things as flexible spending, time off before and after deployment, caring for family members, granting leaves of absence when needed, and recognizing and appreciating the employee's military service. Now, Master Sergeant Johnson wrote in his nominating document, "I nominated Dr. Rowe and Dr. Schlichter for the award for valuing my military experience and continually supporting my military obligations. They have gone above and beyond to ensure that I am, to balance my work, military, and family lives, and I am extremely grateful for not only their support, but of the support of District 158 at large." Dr. Rowe, Dr. Schlichter, your culture of support for Master Sergeant Johnson has helped strengthen our national defense and it's done this by letting him focus on his mission when he's been, when he's deployed. Your support, your support helps Master Sergeant Johnson and those in his charge come home to their families. I would encourage all civilian employers to follow your example. Thank you very much for your service and, for your support because it is a service to our country, what you've done. And I'd like to call up Dr. Rowe and Dr. Schlichter. Up, down, somewhere.
What about Troy? Thank you both for your service.
As a, and we don't normally typically do this and engage after a public comment, but I, I want to thank you for, for coming and joining us tonight, Tim, it was, you know, I really appreciate your kind words. And to Bill, Bill, you've been an excellent addition to our team and I just want to say publicly, you know, the, the work that you are doing, the humility you bring to the job, the focus you have on kids, and the surprising humor that accompanies, that accompanies Bill has been a, an awesome addition to our team and we're, we're very happy to have you, so, thank you.
Okay, awesome. Could you pass this over to the front, please? Moving back to our regularly scheduled agenda. I need to make a motion to suspend the regular meeting at 7:21 PM to hold the waiver and levy hearing. Second from Mr. Quagliano. This is a voice vote, okay, all those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Okay, with that, let's move over to the waiver hearing, statement of affairs application. Ms. Altmeier?
Thank you very much for the last, I think, six now, six years, maybe seven years, we have asked the legislators down in Springfield to provide us a waiver for the statement of annual affairs and by doing so, it, it saves the district $2,000 to $3,000 per year for not having to publish the statement of annual affairs in a local published newspaper. So with that, in front of you, kind of standard operating procedure at this point is asking the board to approve the waiver for the statement of annual affairs, the resolution attached. But this year, we are actually asking the board to approve the waiver for a three-year period. The legislation, legislators allow up to a five-year waiver, but we're simply asking for a three-year waiver at this time to ensure that hopefully the folks down in Springfield approve this resolution. So with that, I just ask and make the recommendation that the Board of Education approve the waiver of the statement of annual affairs for fiscal years 20 through 22 and the waiver attached and the application attached that you have in front of you.
Okay. Questions or comments? Okay, very good. We're still kind of a leading light on this, aren't we?
Yes, for the last several years, we've been the only district in the state of Illinois, in Illinois that's actually applied for this waiver.
Okay, well, it's a good savings. All right, thank you very much. That closes the waiver hearing at 7:23 and moving on to, at the same time, 7:23, let's have the levy hearing.
Hang on, we're gonna need a motion to adjourn the levy, or, I'm sorry, the waiver hearing.
Oh, I guess we do, okay. I, I will make a motion at now 7:24 to adjourn the waiver hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Melendi, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, now we're done with the waiver hearing. 7:24, we'll open the levy hearing. Mr. Altmeier?
Thank you very much. In front of you, you have the levy documents and we've presented the levy on, on two separate meeting occasions, it's a preliminary levy. And that levy, all the documents that you have haven't changed since the last meeting that we had to discuss the levy hearing. That being said, I did pull together a presentation from a district point of view, from an administration point of view, kind of a support for the backup as to why we're asking for the recommendation we are. In other words, we're asking for the 2.1% increase in accordance with the property tax extension law limitation. But I have a presentation that I'd like to walk you through with some data points and some other analytics which kind of support the need for the additional 2.1%, okay? So it all starts with, and I want to kind of bring this back to students, right? When I think about the property tax levy, the property tax revenues for the district approximate 65% of the overall revenue for the, for the district. 100% of that revenue, at the end of the day, is for students. Everything we do is for the safety and security of the students and it's for the education of the students. You know, at the very first institute day, Scott Rowe, Dr. Scott Rowe kind of gave a charge to the staff that, you know, we want to implement fun and engagement and create memorable moments because kids 20, 30, 40 years from now aren't gonna probably remember the Pythagorean theorem, I know I don't, or algebra two, you do? Right? But they will remember, you know, they will remember a lot of different events and things that happen at school every day. And our teachers today are doing an absolute fantastic job creating moments of electricity, so to speak, for kids to remember and obviously drive their education, whether it's an after-school event, or it's a school assembly, or it's a robotics car, they build and race robotics cars, or it's a great science experiment, or I just had to, I had to throw this in there, I just had to do it, this is why we probably need security, actually, in our buildings. I'm the first to agree, okay? Or, obviously, the first time kids experience- about the levy and asking the community and explaining why we're asking for a 2.1% increase, it's because of what we do and the enormous responsibility we have. You know, there's a crisis in America, and it's not just the opioid crisis. Every school district in America is, has social, emotional learning issues going on, right? We have so many things that we, as a district, want to tackle, but we can't because we're the lowest operating cost per school district around. There's a lot of things that we would love to bring to the table, to the Board of Education, that we can't because we don't, we're not spending at the state average. We are at 67% of adequacy, right? Which is why we're receiving additional state funding. So although we're doing a great job with what we have, we don't want to lose sight of all the opportunities that we could have if we had additional revenue. So, I've got some other data points, and I'll try to fly through these. This is a similar presentation than I did from prior year, okay? So we have PTAL-defined EAV and tax rate, we've got some other analytics, and we'll finally get to the 2018 levy data points, which we previously talked about in some other meetings, okay? I think we all understand what PTAL is, right? It's, it's the limit that increases, right, the district's total property tax levy to the CPI or 5%, whichever is lower. By the way, the last time CPI was above 5%. Well, it's never been above 5%. So, okay? I think we've all seen these two charts and graphs, but these charts and graphs kind of explain where we are, right? On the left, we have EAV per student, right? Obviously, we're not a wealthy district. Our EAV per student is at $127,000 per student, while Crystal Lake 155 is at $420,000. They've got a lot of commercial property, okay? But what's also important to note is if you look at Woodstock or Belvidere, they also are not a property wealthy district, but in order to educate the students they feel that they need to educate, their tax rate is some of the highest, right? So if you look at Woodstock at $119,000 EAV, you know, they got the highest tax rate at $8.17. By the way, the, the tax rates on the right, the state is very far behind in reporting tax rates within the report, you know, the school report card. So these are actually 2,015 tax rates, and it's very hard to get more current tax rates. So just so you know, that 594 was actually three or four years ago for the district. Today, we're sitting at about 540 with the 2018 levy that you have in front of you. So as EAV has increased, our tax rate has come down from that 594 to 540, okay? So this is the, the Consumer Price Index over the last seven years. This is the allowable percentage that we're allowed to increase our property taxes by year over year. This is a really important graph, because back in 2011 and '12, the district abated almost $6.9 million, keeping property taxes flat for a three-year period, and since that time, we've abated, as we discussed, or as we all know, $400,000 a year from the Capital Development Grant. So as you look at CPI, this was the allowable percentage that we passed, but then we also abated, using school district dollars, we reduced the overall property tax extension to lower that CPI percentage to these percentages. So if you could see, between 2011, '12, right, we kept taxes flat for three years, from '10 to '11 to '11 to '12, and then '13, '14, '15, and '16, it was significantly less than 1%. And I think we all know it costs more than 1% per year to run a school district with union contracts and salaries and benefits approximating 75% of the overall expense of the district. We know that was very challenging to do, and the last year, our 2.1% after the $400,000 abatement, from an operating tax standpoint, was actually only 1.45%. And this year, we anticipate it to be 1.47%. So again, not a lot, considering what we do on a daily basis, okay? This chart's important, because we were able to do the things that we did in the prior years, because we had a lot of new construction coming into the district, and when new construction from residential and commercial property comes into the district, we receive additional property tax revenue, and that additional property tax revenue allowed us to make payroll, so to speak, allowed us to do a lot of different things that we did and continue to move forward. From 2014, '15, '16, and '17, those dollars, let me give you an example, for the $45 million, that was an approximate $2.4 million of additional property taxes for that year. And last year, for 2017, with 19.9 million of new construction, that approximated $1 million of additional property taxes that we will continue to receive. Well, we all know new construction is coming down.
Right, so just, '16 was part of that, the TIF coming down?
Yeah.
So the TIF was, what, 18?
24, 25 million.
Okay. I'm trying to give you guys a frame of reference why that spiked so high. It's just because the, the TIF, TIF came off, and it's treated, that was treated as new construction.
Yeah, it was tax incremental finance that came off of 24 million.
So, you see that big spike, but it's kind of artificially pushed up, because it's not real new construction. It would have been more like 20 million, so it's kind of closer to the '17 year, just for your frame of reference.
Right.
Yep.
So my point is, we are seeing a decrease in new construction, which has, in years past, allowed us to really fund our needs moving forward, okay? I think we all know where we stand from an operating, right, operations per student standpoint, operating cost per student standpoint, so I'm not going to hammer that too much. I've got a few, a few charts and graphs here that I do want to share with the board, because I don't think the board has seen any of these, okay? I was asked to do a presentation at a national conference to tell the Huntley 158 story. In other words, our story is, we are a very low operating, you know, per student district, per cost, per student district, and how are we able to do the things we do with the dollars we have? And it's really a story about efficiency. And so when they asked me to do the presentation, they knew we were doing solar, and they knew we were doing good things with energy, but they asked me to visualize it and quantify it. So using Forecast 5, I actually went out, and unfortunately, with the state of Illinois, I have everybody's energy cost data points. What I don't have is the square footage of all their facilities and buildings. What we do have is we have enrollment, and really, enrollment kind of approximates square footage per facility from a utilization standpoint, anyway. So on a per-student basis, I was able to run this, this, this chart and graph for all our benchmark districts, which show that on a per-student basis, we're spending about $177, we're the, we're the lowest rung. It's hard to see, guys, but we are on the bottom at $177 per pupil, while unfortunately, Geneva 304 is at 509 and blowing everybody away, okay? And so we've always known, we've done a good job, Mr. Rankasik has done a fantastic job with energy costs, but I said, "Well, you know, I really want to see, how does this compare at the state level? How does this compare with all Luda districts?" Well, here's the chart for all Luda districts. So we're sixth from the best with all Luda districts at $177 per pupil, and again, Geneva 304 for all Luda districts is not doing so well, okay? And the reason I bring this up is, is really for the community as well as for the board, because we're doing everything we can to keep these dollars into the classroom, right? Because that's what this is all about. We're able to do the things we're doing, because we're doing these things, but there's so many things we still need to do, which is why we're making the recommendation to pass the 2.1%. It's also part of the story, oh, by the way, we want to be number one, right? So we're doing this, and after we do this, we will definitely be number one with the solar, okay? One more point, we have Medicaid, right? We have a Medicaid story, and we've always known we've done really well with Medicaid. And Medicaid, for maybe some of the newer board members, we receive Medicaid revenue, okay? And that Medicaid revenue is for Medicaid-eligible students that have IEPs, right? Again, I knew we were always doing a good job with collecting Medicaid, but I've never really benchmarked it against other districts, or our benchmark districts, or the state level. So when I did this presentation, and I did the Huntley story, well, I went out to Forecast 5, and I grabbed data. Now, unfortunately, you can't just grab Medicaid-eligible students per district, but there's a lot of other, we know how many, we know every district has a special ed population, we know how large their special ed population is, we know their free and reduced percentages, and there's a correlation between the free and reduced percentage and Medicaid-eligible. So I used that to create this chart and graph, and lo and behold, we're collecting approximately $4,000 per Medicaid-eligible student, almost $650,000 to $750,000 a year versus all of our other benchmark districts. And I said, "Well, let's look at every single district in the state and see where we stand." We're pretty good. So we're pretty efficient, we're, we're making sure we're maximizing our revenues, we're making sure we're, we're keeping our expenses down, we're third in the state for maximizing Medicaid revenue. And I was pleasantly surprised, actually, on the previous chart, Geneva's doing a pretty good job collecting their Medicaid. I don't have to go after them for that, so that's good. So I wanted to share those things, just to say, "Hey, we're getting it done, but this isn't enough. We're still at 67% of adequacy, we're one of the lowest operating per cost pupil districts around. We're asking the board to approve the 2.1% increase." The specifics of the 2018 levy are up here in front of you, you, you have them in your, in your memo, we've gone through them the last two meetings. You know, at this point, again, administration makes the recommendation to increase last year's extension by the maximum allowable 2.1%. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have, and thanks for bearing with me for that presentation.
All right, are there any questions, comments?
I have a comment. Thank you. I think, I think that was an excellent presentation, and there were a lot of things that, I don't know about the rest of the board members, but on there that I didn't, I didn't realize. And I, you know, I'm going to be a no on this, you know, but, but it's not because I don't, I want to say for everyone that I, I think you do an excellent job, and I, we're very lucky to have you, and I, I would challenge anyone in the state to look at our finances and, and question them, because I, I think we do an excellent job financially, and we're financially stable, and it's not about that at all. I just, I really deeply believe that we're crippling ourselves with, with our property taxes, and, you know, this is our biggest property tax amount on our bill, and everybody knows that, and, and if we can hold flat for just a couple of years to give our residents a little bit of reprieve, then I think, I think that's worth doing. So, but it's by no means because I don't believe that you are doing a phenomenal job.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Um, I guess, why I do compliment the, the presentation as well, those ones where you had to make the adjustment, I'm assuming you're stating the Huntley math in exact same format as the others, when you're approximating the Medicaid one in particular, right?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And I guess...
That's when I knew the math worked.
Yeah. Um, and I guess maybe counter to the argument to some extent is, I also think the, the, your house, your community, and everything else is, represents the biggest investment that people make, and I think the return on investment available via some of the things we're able to do here, I think it's, you know, what, versus what can be saved in a marginal savings of taxes, I think the investment that we're talking about here has a bigger payoff than the value of the savings that a slightly reduced tax bill would bring. And I know, you know, property taxes overall are very high and burdensome, but I think that's structural in terms of how the state works and how taxes work overall, and I don't think it can be solved with the school districts alone, it would have to be something holistic across the entire tax system of the state of Illinois. So I guess I would vote in favor of what's proposed here.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I have a question or more of a clarification. In your memo, you have a section here that's in bold about the 2%, 2.1% and how it would affect homeowners. Just for clarity purposes, that's not a guarantee or, or any kind of a number that says homeowners should expect a 2.1% increase. It, it, that, that responsibility for that increase does not come directly from the school district. We're making an ask for the, for metaphorically, for a pie, and how that pie gets sliced amongst homeowners, again, does not fall on our shoulders, it is not our task to do that. There's been some question marks about that historically, and I wanted to at least make sure that that's clarified publicly, so that anybody who is watching or pulls these records in the future understands that, where that responsibility lies. So just wanted to throw that out there and have you concur or not concur, dispel what I'm saying.
No, I, I think you're absolutely right. You know, for the last several years, we've included a note within the memo of the tax levy that explains to a homeowner what, what can they expect if everybody's assessed values essentially remain the same from year to year, to give them an indication of what is 2% towards the, you know, the school district portion of their property tax bill. This year, it's $75, right? And the $200,000, you know, that's $66,000, 66666 of EAV, and per $100 of EAV, our current tax rate, our estimated tax rate right now is $5.40. You know, that times 666 equals approximately $4,000, times 2.1% is the $75 that we arrive at. So it's pretty, pretty straightforward math to arrive at, what is the estimated increase? Again, that's assuming everybody's EAV is exactly the same as prior year, but we know there's shifts in EAV, we know EAV goes up and down between residential neighborhoods, there's apportionment differences that come into play between Kane and McHenry County, and that's also noted in the memo. It, it's there to give folks an idea of what is 2.1%.
Yeah, I, I think a lot of, a lot of times, people latch onto it and say, "Well, this is the number that I'm supposed to expect." And then when they see something far different, things hit the fan, and, and I, I want to raise the point, so that people understand that this is an approximation, there's a lot of factors that go into that approximation, but by no means is, is that a guarantee that that's the number that they should expect.
Correct. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right.
Just, just real quick. Because it's ironic, I, I was just writing about our energy costs, but I, I could never quantify, you know, theoretically, I kind of knew this. I'm glad you put together something like that, because I, I really suspected that's what it was across the spectrum among other districts. Excellent data.
Yeah.
This, this is why I support this. When I got on the school board, I kind of likened myself as a fiscal conservative, and I still feel that I am, but you make a very compelling argument as to how fiscally conservative our district has been, largely out of necessity, but also out of just recognizing that fiduciary duty to the residents that, how we spend the money. And I applaud that. It's, the, the story's right there in the numbers. If this district was not achieving, if this district was just on different ends of those spectrums on those graphs, I would have a different view of this. And I know that every time that we've approved the levy, that the district has done quite well, and you started out your presentation with, "This is about the students." I believe that, I don't think that's just lip service. I think that is shown in how we started the meeting tonight with 15 National Merit Scholars here. That's the kind of investment that we're making in the district, and that's how the money is being used, and I wish things were different throughout the state, but with what we're doing, I have no doubt that that is the right thing to do. Okay? Anything else? Okay, then at, thank you, Mr. Raltmeier, very much for that presentation. 7:46, I will make a motion to adjourn the levy hearing.
Second from Mr. Quagliano. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, loving hearing is closed, and so we have to go back into the regular meeting, and before we do that, at 7:46, we should have a roll call.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mr. Garen? Mr. Fleck?
Here.
Mr. Quagliano?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mr. Garen? Mr. Fleck?
Here.
Mr. Quagliano?
Here.
Mr. Gentry?
Here.
Mrs. Walker?
Here.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yeah.
Okay, we still have our quorum. We did already do the public comment. I don't think we have any more public comment. Okay, there being none, we'll move on to revision and adoption of the agenda. And I always leave my notes for this because I mess it up every time. Ms. Lombard? Okay. That one. Dr. Schlitzer? Dr. Bzinski? Mr. Altmeier? Mr. Zare? It looks like we have some things for Community Relations. Dr. Rowe, do you have a superintendent's report?
Do not.
Okay. And I do not have a president's report, so I will make a motion to revise and adopt the agenda with the removal of items 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 17, and 18.
Second.
Second from Mr. Troy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, then the agenda is adopted, so I just need to remember where we left off. This is where I always get myself messed up. I think we're on number 16 now, Community Relations. Turn that over to Ms. Melendi or Mr. Armstrong, either one of you.
You can take that, Mr. Armstrong.
You have the FOIA report. Be happy to answer any questions.
What are your questions on?
Lot of cost.
Yeah. Have we been keeping track of what our FOIA costs are each month? Okay. I mean, yeah, can we have a running total or, you know? Yeah, good. I'd just like to see how we're budgeting for that and everything, so. They are what they are.
I guess, do we budget for that?
The costs are mostly sunk because most of that is staff time. There, we do frequently have some cost for technology that gets taken out the door of here, particularly with these requests for things like video. That's a huge amount of data, terabytes and terabytes of data. We have looked into recouping some of that money under the law and have, as of yet, been unsuccessful.
Very good. All right, anything else on number 16? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be removed? Okay, there being none, but I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda with all the items listed therein. Second. Okay, second from Mr. Gentry. Let's have a roll call.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Garen? Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Very good. By the way, I heard myself say "therein." Every now and then, I catch myself saying words like that, and I'm sorry. It's a habit. No items removed from the consent agenda. With that, we will move on to 21. We've got supplemental purchase orders, supplemental accounts payable. Mr. Altmeier, is there anything on there that we need to talk about? Okay. Questions, comments? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the supplemental purchase orders and supplemental accounts payable for the amounts listed in 21.1 of the agenda.
Second.
Second from Mr. Quagliano. Roll call.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Garen? Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Okay, 21.2, this is the levy for 2019 property tax extension. We already had our hearing on this. I will make a motion to approve the levy as presented at the hearing and in your packet. Second from Mr. Quagliano. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay, let's have a roll call.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Garen? Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
No.
Mrs. Walker?
No.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, 21.3, application for waiver of school code 105 ILCS 5/1017, Statement of Affairs. We had a hearing on that earlier. I would like to make a motion to approve the waiver hearing as presented in the agenda. Second from Mr. Troy. Is there any further discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Garen? Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Is there any more public comment? Okay, we're good, all right? I'll give you another chance, all right? With that, then at 7:52, I will make a motion to adjourn. Second from Mr. Quagliano. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.